Ready on it. All right. Keep there. It's all time. Watch it. It's like four.
We're having up in Mexico, right? For the, uh, you have a woman.
Yeah.
The friends that I have moved.
Isn't it?
I saw the first time.
I remember.
Or.
Yes.
So. Only the two month, the north.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do for how we're doing. Two.
Can't say.
Yeah. All right. I am following. Uh, the village board meeting on September twenty seventh, twenty twenty one to order. Rule call, please.
Trustee Brochus.
Here.
Trustee Thuzius.
Here.
Trustee Brunner.
Here.
Trustee Paul McCawski.
Here.
Trustee Hartman.
President.
Trustee Kettlebaiter. President Langfeld.
Here. Stand for five positions. Or.
United States of America. And to recall what for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible, with every being just as well.
Public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address village board at any issue. Please approve the time limit of three minutes. While the village board encourages input from residents that may not discuss. But they have to be issued that this is not really nor on the agenda. If anybody that would like to speak, anybody on the.
We did not, we did not have anyone sign up or, uh, call it out specifically.
All right.
Jake, we have turns.
You have time. Okay. Um, consent agenda upon request of any trustee, any item may be removed from the consent agenda or separate consideration under general business. Anybody want to remove anything?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will second. All right. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All, all same. Village before, before the village officers. Um, I just have one. Um, I want to thank Michael for, uh, taking up lead for Brewery Road. Uh, community meeting on that construction. And Andy, you're kind of going to be for, um, the wellhouse since Parks America has taken that up. Um, I have no volunteers to join on the committee to look at, um, uh, benefits for employees and compensation as we talked about at the last meeting, nor have I received any requests, um, or information on people who have expertise in that HR. Um, there is, so I would ask if you know somebody or you're interested, um, please send it to me. I'd like to get this committee going, uh, next month or, uh, November, so we can get started. For those who were not here, what we're talking about is we kind of hit a base. Um, support of pay increases. Uh, last meeting with the agreement that the committee will be looking at longevity pay. And we have to review the classifications and job descriptions. There's a whole pile of things in that report that Bill sent us that a committee is going to look and then bring back to the board. So it'll be for sure, uh, Phil and I and Bobby on it. I would like to get another trustee and one person from staff. And then it was suggested that there's some resident that had expertise in HR for them to be on that committee. That's what I'm talking about. So think about that and, and let me know. That's all I have. Judy will not be here tonight, so there will be nothing from, uh, vice president. Other trustees, reporters, anybody else? Something they want to.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I thought you did that.
I'll just volunteer to be on that. They tried to video to give another person to. Okay. Back off.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Bill?
Oh, uh, beginning of September, the Boy Scouts celebrated fifty years of being a Boy Scout troop in the village. Uh, the PI and it was very well attended. They did a very nice job. They had a nice flag burning ceremony in remembrance of, of, uh, nine eleven. And, uh, really appreciated the, uh, uh, the opportunity to have a troop here in the village for, for our youth to grow. So, um, very successful troop also.
I don't know if you were the last meeting and developed the village. Ended up being, uh, community organization of the year for our district. They had nominated us.
Oh, cool.
Yeah. Anybody else? All right. Bill?
Yeah, there's two quick items here. Uh, sustainability committee is, uh, preparing a recommendation in regards to normal May, uh, for twenty twenty two. Uh, that was on, uh, request, a request by a resident. Uh, so that'll be coming to the village board in October. And then also the sustainability committee is including or, or in the conclusion phase of their sustainability plan. Yeah. Uh, regards to big crossing at Saint Francis, uh, they are finishing up utilities this week and then looking to, looking, uh, to, uh, start work on the right away and rock and rail, uh, next week. That being said, uh, we did receive a supplemental for, uh, a concept plan to resolve, uh, lots of some need for something submitted for duplexes. And, uh, that will be working its process through, uh, the plan commission of the village board.
Okay. Yeah. All right. Thank you. Any other reports? Okay, Mike?
I'll just, following our PRC meeting last month, uh, the committee did approve to have the wellhouse as part of the visioning session to start our next meeting. So a flyer's been made up and sent out, actually hand delivered to all seventy residents that are on the park. Uh, and we've received some email feedback, but it'll be October seventeenth at six P M.
Thank you very much for taking lead on that, Mike. Is that your regular meeting now?
Yeah. Yeah, correct. That one day. They get their own days.
No, I'm just the seventeenth.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, the eighteen. Eighteen.
Eighteen. And you start at six or seven?
Uh, six.
Thank you. All right. Any other reports? All right. We'll go to general business. Uh, number one is discussion and possible action regarding body worn cameras. How I'd like to run this is let's have, uh, the discussion before we put a much, uh, much, a motion on the table. Get your questions answered from the chief, uh, on this. And then we will do a motion. That way the motion cover anything that, uh, we may want to change on what was handed to us. So Chief, you want to do a quick summary? Is that, otherwise I can open it up to question.
I, I think we've probably covered this over and over, so we can just open it up for any questions somebody might have.
All right. Does anybody have questions for the chief? Um, on any of this? I guess I would start with, we'll go by in the order. We'll start with any questions on the equipment, uh, that is involved in this. Okay? Then we'll, uh, if everybody's comfortable, we'll go with the policy. Does anybody have any questions on policy? Go ahead and ask.
All right. Um. Second. Okay.
Uh, sorry. Wait, you want me? I have some questions.
You go.
Okay. So just so everybody knows, I'm going to be referring to what's on page P E F eighty three. It's section five, operating guidelines of the camera. That's the section where I have questions. So one, I'm going to start with the letter B as in void. You have a wording of should not compromise officer's safety or the integrity of an investigation. What are you referring to when you're talking about the integrity of an investigation?
Uh, are you on four, you said?
I'm on five. Section five, uh, operating guideline.
Okay. Yep.
And it's, uh, letter B as in void. The last part of that sentence is integrity of an investigation. Officers should notify individuals that are in contact with that a B W C is being utilized. This should be done when practical and should not compromise officer's safety or the integrity of an investigation. From what my back means.
I think what that would mean is officer's safety, obviously that one's, that one is.
Yeah. I understand those, yeah.
Um, integrity of the investigation. Would it be to stop somebody by telling them that you're recording so they can stop talking to you? So you're in, the integrity of that investigation, you don't want to, if, if you're collecting evidence, you don't want to stop that, that collection of evidence by purposely telling someone that they're, that they're being recorded.
Okay. I, I guess this is where, because there's a couple others that I have that are kind of. Let me ask you, does an individual have the right to ask for the camera to be turned off?
Yes. In certain, in certain circumstances.
Okay. And I thought it was, uh, when I read this, I thought it was the officer would say, I'm recording. Are you okay with that? And the person could say, no, I'm not okay with it.
In certain circumstances.
Okay. What are these circumstances?
They're, they're listed, so.
Are you talking about C then?
Yeah.
The ones that are being listed?
Yeah. So in circumstances where there's victims of crime, confidential informants, juveniles, situations like that where we would almost ask for permission. But in a traffic stop, you're not, I mean, we're recording, uh, right now and we don't tell them that we're recording.
No, I'm fine with that. I, I just, my concern is I, I, I want to know which definition of integrity because I could see that being implied to people under seat. An officer could say, yeah, he asked a victim, but it's going to interfere with the integrity of my investigation. So I didn't need to notify the victim. I, I'm not good with that. So I'm trying to, what's your definition of integrity of an investigation means?
And why is that concerning, Jake?
Because I, you never, in policy, you don't want conflict.
Sure.
So if we have it in there where I'm a victim of, let's keep it simple, a fraud. And I'm embarrassed that I was taken on home fraud, right? I, I got taken on that. I will choose, look, you can come into my house, but I don't want the camera on. Right? I think that should be my choice. But if the officer comes in and says, no, I need to keep it on for the integrity of my investigation, but we're in conflict.
But that, the.
So who's right?
That would not, I mean, that would not cover that because a, a fraud would not fall into something like that. I mean, you're not even going to turn that on for that. I think what, if you're trying to put some kind of understanding to see out of integrity in investigations, when you're doing an investigation, sometimes people lie to you. So if you have a sexual assault victim that is lying to you, why would you shut that off? It's equally important to, to determine whether the victim is lying or not. And that is based on your investigation of the, you can't shut it off just because you think it, it's that way.
See, this is my concern. I think a person who is claiming to be sexual assaulted, I don't think we have any idea at the time of interviewing if there had been a lie to you at that time.
Exactly.
I think they have a right to say, I don't want the camera on.
Yeah.
And the camera stays off. I don't care about the investigation at that point. Now later on, if you find that they're false.
That's what I'm talking.
And they're becoming a suspect.
That's what I'm talking about.
Then I have no problem, but then that falls under the suspect.
Okay.
And where it's acceptable.
But that's what I'm, that's exactly what I'm talking about. So in the, so when we start the interview, you're gonna, you're gonna soft approach any interview. So you would start with them as victims, but as a progression of the interview and things start to not add up, then the officer should be able to have the right to turn on their recorder and say, okay, something's not adding up to this. We've had that happen here in town. I've had that happen multiple times. So you could start, you're, you're not going to start recording a sexual assault victim, but during the course of that interview, things might change. Or no different than in the course of a, if you're at a house and all of a sudden now you find out there's a warrant just because you were there on a fraud and you're not.
And I did thought that S B says officers should notify individuals they are in contact with that B W C is being utilized. One of the exceptions to that is the integrity of an investigation. I think that is extremely broad. And I don't think any officer would have to technically make that, uh, notification because it falls under the integrity of a.
So what would you recommend that we?
I would eliminate that. It makes very sense that it should not be done. It should only be done when it's practical. You're not going to call ahead or anything is when you get in contact. That makes sense and it should not compromise an officer's safety. I agree with that a hundred percent. My concern is the integrity of an investigation is so broad that it covers everything. But Bill.
I don't think so.
But to me, it's common sense. But I could see on the very next paragraph.
Yeah.
He's pointing out that this is, you know, he's not going to interview a victim of a crime. He's not going to do stuff that blah, 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 right?
I agree.
So, I mean, it's going to come down to, um, different training of the, uh, police officers.
And common sense.
On the youth and within, within the, which is what we're trying to figure out here, policy. I'm just, I'm pointing out that there's, I understand you don't want to count. I get into the policy.
I get. Absolutely.
I totally get that. So it'll just, it just needs to be cleaned up a little bit then for what you're trying to do instead.
Oh, absolutely. My, my big thing is I believe people should have a right to know that their data report. And that's what B states.
But that doesn't give them the right to tell them to turn off the camera. Correct?
Because if a police officer is there observing, it's more or less the same as a camera.
That's why. As a law is concerned.
That's exactly my.
But here's the difference with, with a camera. And when you go into my house, when the officer comes into my house, we communicate, yeah, the officer can see, they do their report. The difference now is you can go and ask for that reporting. And now you see my whole house and what's in it. Yes, the key difference is when it's reported on paper, there's protection of privacy. When it's in a camera and you have this film of anything, it's, it's, it's different. It's very different on the privacy side. So in my opinion, we require officers to get a search warrant to come into your house to search. Now they're doing a visual search and recording it with no, uh, legal protection. And I, I, I can't accept that. But I think I should have a right to tell the officer to turn on.
But it's also covered, covered in policy and state law that, that, that the department can, can refuse to give you that open record if it has no merit. You, you do a balance test.
No, me, you're.
It's not open.
Chief, you're dead wrong on open records. I was the custodian for the Madison Police Department for two years. The reason someone wants a record cannot be taken into consideration and denied. There's about five exceptions. Open investigation, juveniles that are protected by state law, sensitive issues that may have a negative effect on an individual and something else. There's five of them, but the record is considered open unless you can prove under one of those five. And why someone is getting it is not one of the factors. That is not, that is not something you can turn someone down. Okay?
In twenty-five years of using body cams, I've never had anybody show up at the office, knock on the door and say, I want my neighbor's video from inside. That's, and I would imagine that if you called all the police departments in Dane County, that's the case. That, that this doesn't happen. That doesn't happen. And I think that is illogical for that to happen. That, it just doesn't make any sense. If somebody's asking for video, then it's probably, it's probably based on something else. They want something else. It has something to do with the case or whatnot. I, I don't, I don't think that's, that is a valid concern.
Okay. Um, I'm going to just go on to the next one. I'll, I said my piece on that. He is in David. It's either a title on, unless, uh, that should either be a capital U or a comma after interaction. I don't know if you want it to be a comma or a capital U.
Same letter D?
Yeah. Letter D, same section. Everything I have is in section. Second.
Yeah, it's common.
Okay. And then, uh, app is in frame. It says, once a recording has begun, it shall remain on until the incident has reached a conclusion or the officer has left the scene. So my understanding on reading this, when the officer gets out, they turn on their camera. Right? So they come up and here's a victim of a sexual assault. And she says, I don't want the camera on. So this says shall, which means all incidents, it has nothing for an exception to that. So we've already put the officers in conflict.
But you've already covered it in C. So, I mean, you could keep going around and around and circling this.
If, if there are reasons where an officer could shut this off, and I agree that they shouldn't, unless there should be a comment unless falling under section.
Okay.
Whatever it is.
Sure.
Because I am commenting when something happens, someone's going to read policy and say, the officer violated app. I was a victim and they, they turned it off when they should have kept it on or it's that app.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation. And then under K as in king, it says officers shall document in all incidents, reports, whatever recordings are made during an incident in question. I would, uh, suggest that you have in there that they place, uh, under their heading, video evidence. So there's, someone doesn't have to be.
We already do that.
Okay. As long as, that's not clear in policy. So I just want to make sure that there's something that it's easy for someone to know when there's video evidence, because the last thing you want is to get rid of video evidence accidentally. And most departments do that where they place it underneath the heading. So it's very clear that there's, and people don't have to read the whole report. And that is all I have on policy. So I guess I just want to.
Well, I think let's go back to that integrity because.
Well, let me just listen.
We have a.
Let me just, I, I think there's a, maybe an easier way, even though I think that's extremely broad. So an individual only can ask for the camera to be turned off if they fall under C. Is that correct?
Pretty much, yes.
I, I, I guess I, I, I can't support, you know, for just a long way, if, if people can go into homes without.
Well, well, tell me more.
Yeah.
Tell me more about why you feel that way.
Well, I, I, I think right now in society, we have pretty much given up all our privacy. I mean, there's cameras everywhere. They track us on the internet. Everybody's selling their information on us. I mean, there isn't anything really private anymore. The only thing that our country has preserved and they continue to preserve, and that's your home. That is your home and you should have the right to control what happens in your home. And it's a straight, it's, it's a straight privacy honor. The whole theory that your house is your castle.
There's nothing wrong with having them step outside. Okay?
No, I don't have a problem with that.
So you're still recording and you, if you have to step outside, you step outside.
But, yeah, I, yeah, if the person wants to come outside, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, there's the option.
My, my, well, there is an S not. Let's say a fraud. Let's go back to fraud. You're going to want to come in and look at all the paperwork.
But you're not going to record that. I don't, I don't.
Well, why would you?
Why, why would you? That, that's a victim of a crime. Why would you record a victim of a crime? You're not interviewing them as a suspect. They're reporting a crime. They're, they're victims of crime. Why would you, why would you record them?
Because I think it could be very valuable. And there are some, I, as a vic, as cer, as certainly, Vic, see again, you're, I still think there should be choice on this. That's all I'm coming from. So if I'm a victim of a fraud and I'm standing outside or maybe even invite you into my house, I have no problem then you record it.
Well, if you would ask.
And I think it would be valuable for your officers and the investigation to record statements made. We do it all the time. We bring people into interview rooms.
Sure.
And we record them all the time. So we have that. The difference is with an interview room, you can protect that a little bit more because it's evidence versus what you're doing on that. That's the difference. Go ahead, Bill.
So a question on the cameras themselves. Can, do you have the option of turning off video, keeping audio on?
No.
It's either audio, video, or nothing.
Yeah. Right now, if we go to a call right now, there's audio of it anyway, because we use our squad cards. So the only difference now is that there's going to be video of it. So it's for video evidence of what is going on inside the house, uh, or what's going on in an incident. That's it. If somebody asks us to shut it off, I think it's common sense and it's documented here. If someone asks us to shut off, we shut it off. We document that we shut it off and why we shut it off.
So could we, could the policy say something like this, that going into a home, the camera will be turned off unless you have a search warrant to go in and then you can have a camera on? I'm just asking that.
No, I, I think where it should be, it should be a consent issue. You know, most people are not going to care. They're going to say, yeah, come on in.
Well, but, but if you go with the.
I'm okay with that as long as they have that option. Because even with a search warrant, most of the time we don't get search warrants. People give us consent to search.
Okay. So the question, and is that, that I understand. And I think that, that we train the officers not to, that they, you know, that they're using a less amount of resistance, whether they're recording even a victim or a suspect or whatever. You're always using de-escalation. I'm more looking at like domestic violence. You're going to ask somebody inside a home whether I can record? No, you're not.
But, but Chief, here's where I, Andy, I'm sorry. If you, it's okay. Here's the difference. If the suspect has, has left the scene, right? Now you're just truly talking to the victim over domestic. Yes, I think she has a right to ask for that camera not to be on.
Okay.
Now, if you're going to a, a, a domestic that's occurring and both parties are there and you're breaking them up, absolutely the camera should not.
But if you're talking about evidence, which you just, you just compared fraud, evidence fraud, collecting evidence fraud compared to domestic violence fraud? You're talking about night and day. You would rather have the evidence from a victim of a, of a, of a domestic violence rather than someone who lost a few bucks.
It's very clear on here that you can have cameras on when you're making arrests when you're doing that. Uh, that I'm okay with. I'm okay with that. It's, it's once that urgency is done.
Yeah.
Right? Okay. Andy?
Sorry. Just to clarify, this is for my own. So if a suspect wants you to turn off their camera, if, if long as it's not impeding with an investigation, you would have to then turn off the camera.
Not a suspect, no.
Not a suspect. Not a suspect. Just a regular, okay.
A regular citizen, citizen contacts, victims of crime, then you shut it off. You know, if they don't want you to record them, you don't record them. It doesn't even matter because even if you record them or document it, they still have to testify. You can't testify, uh, to hearsay evidence unless you're at a probable cause here. So if this is going to go to trial, they have to testify to it. It doesn't matter what you wrote down in the report or what they recorded. It doesn't matter. They've got to testify in that case. So, so if someone, a victim asks us to shut it off, they're already going through a trial, uh, you know, they've been crying, they're having a bad day, uh, they just got battered by their significant other, we shut it off. Why would you keep that on? And it would, it would impede your investigation to do that. I just don't want to eliminate it where it's always, because you can't really do always. I've been at calls for service where it's been nothing and it escalated very quickly when you ran the person off, so you got a warrant. And we were there for a dog complaint. I, I've had vehicle lockouts that turned into a warrant arrest after you run them. So, I mean, you can't have it where it's, you have to shut it off if it's just casual contact. You've got to be prepared for that moment, uh, that things just happen. So I, I think you would handcuff your department if you're, there's just no way to document every single case. You've got to practice. You've got to have training. You've got to capture the right, what you're doing, what you're not doing. And that's going to be through, through us working through this program.
Thank you.
So.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to disagree a little bit. There are a lot of departments that require the notification. Okay, I just wanna disagree a little bit, there are a lot of departments that require the notification and the right to turn off, and it's not me and Tony that.
Okay.
Right? If anything, these recordings are very valuable and officers doing their reporting is they can play it back and put in quotes and everything else. It makes a great report, it turns a lot of people not going to trial because of the other. So on the side of the bad guy and all that, it's a absolute great thing. All I'm asking for is protection from the regular citizen on entering a home and report. That's, that's what I, I, I think there should be in C adding home warrants in it. I thought that's what it was kind of, officer should ask involved individuals for consent to report the interaction.
I'm still struggling to figure out what your concern is here.
That some of the people have control of their home.
Right, I get it. So somebody calls the cops and they show up to their house and your fear is that they're gonna get their interior of their house recorded because they called the cops?
Well, in, in a very simple.
But I don't, I don't think an officer is gonna hit the, we would never just show up to a house and hit the record. Now, if you're inside the house and things escalate, all of a sudden you got someone fighting, now you're turning it on.
But that was my question, I, as soon as you get to a call, you turn on.
No, I don't, I don't, I think that that depends, they're, they're victims of crime. So why would you, it says it right there, they're not for victims of crime. So if a, if a person who is a victim of a crime, fraudulent activity, whatever, a battery, if they don't want to be recorded, we're not recording them. Why would we record?
I understand that part of it, but, so the officer still doesn't turn on their recorder?
No.
To contact the person?
Yeah, till they're there, because they're victims of crime at that point. Why would they record? There's no need to record.
If they don't know that, and see, yeah.
Well, when you're there, that's why it takes that long to turn it on and it records two minutes before. So everything that, how you came up to the scene, how you were there, that's, our squad cameras do the same thing. We stop people all the time speeding, it captures two minutes before that traffic stop. So it, it tells us where the officer was, what he was doing, so it's still, the, the camera is on, it's just not recording.
I'm very familiar with all that.
Okay, so, so it's still gonna capture it, no matter what, if something escalates.
You don't get, just so you know, you don't get audio.
No, you don't get audio.
Mike, I have a few questions.
Well, you were right in the same area where I was, these are the same sort of things. Where I have questions about, I ask them or modify them and I. Okay, so I agree with you Jay with the privacy inside a house, so what has to change in D in order to ensure that, I guess that's the question. Are you, do you don't like the way that, I don't like the way that it's written now or that it should have something like, if the individual doesn't want the interaction recorded, the officer shall comply? And does it need something like that?
There, there's two spots, you could put it in where he lists the expectation of privacy, like bathrooms, locker rooms. You could say someone's individual, you could add that to the list, you could put it there.
But it's right there, it's in D, it says, in locations where individuals have a reasonable expectation of privacy, such as residence or medical settings. Officers should ask individual, involved individuals for consent to record the interaction unless the recording is being made pursuant to official law enforcement action, including citations, arrests. Warnings, criminal investigation, or any other situation where an officer may have accusatory encounters with the citizen. I mean, I, I don't know how many more times we gotta cover it, it's right there.
That's it.
It's a black and white, it's in D. It, it's, this is, this has been studied and covered and I, I, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, this is a, so this is a part.
So, so, well, again, the above sentence, it says individual doesn't want the, the interaction recorded, the officer shall comply with their request. I mean, it's.
Yeah, if we've been asked to shut it off, shut it off, and then the officer will have to document as to why they shut it off. If, if they're not gonna shut it off for someone who is actively resisting or fighting or being arrested or cited or. Or anything where we, where we might end up in an accusatory situation, why would we? The whole point of this is to capture the whole answer.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. So, but now I have, now this goes back to one of my initial questions. And when you say officer should ask the involved individual for consent, this should give you the option where it shall, you have to ask for consent to use it inside the house. Right? From the email that I sent that there was between should and shall, and I was trying to decipher. If in there, the officer shall ask the involved individuals for consent to record, that, that means they have to say, why consent to record the inside of your house? They have to ask it then. Whereas with should, you're providing the op- the officer the option of saying it, right?
And that's only because if you say shall, then you're tying the officer's hands. And what's, what's to say you're in a call where you're there just handling nothing and all of a sudden husband shows up and you don't, there, you're handling something totally different. All of a sudden, you've got another incident. You, you've gotta be able to hit that recorder, otherwise what, you're, you're, that one word is option rather than mandatory.
I understand, but the, unless the recording is made pertinent to an official law enforcement action, as soon as the husband gets there and starts hitting her, another action has just started to take place and the camera can come off.
Sure.
So you aren't handsome, and you, you do have the option to turn it on as soon as it turns into an official other law enforcement action.
But I, I usually should is the appropriate one. I think there needs to be that flexibility, because there is.
I, I understand where you're coming. You were trying to enforce the privacy of the home, not the way that I saw that you could, them having to have to ask for consent to record the residence.
Yeah, but I think what the chief is saying, standard practice is to do that. And if you don't, you have to come up with a justification on why you did it, which makes total sense.
Well, those are the.
The shell doesn't really allow that, right? That's predetermined. And it does get officers in trouble because, when it says will or shall, if you don't, if you deviate, then you're in violation of policy.
And to be honest with you, this policy, you, we could work on it for the next two years. The reality is when an incident happens of high risk in the high stressful situation, you're not trying to remember every word on here. You're just, you have a general sense, this is a general guideline of how to do it. There are gonna be times where you're gonna have to bend, bend this policy, it just, all policies are meant to be bent a little bit. As long as you're not completely breaking them, officers are gonna be okay there. You cannot document in eight pages everything that's going to happen in an officer's day-to-day operation, you just can't. So this is a good policy, it has, obviously, we can keep working on wording and changing this and that, but I don't think that it would make much difference at this point. It, it is a well thought out, and not only has it been worked by us, but other chiefs as well. I, I use their, their, uh, models, even added more restrictions because of the expectation of privacy. Uh, Shorewood Hills has, does not have this tight of an expectation of privacy, and they're the ones that kinda helped us, but I knew that that was a concern. So we, so we added it and made sure we tightened it up a little bit. I don't have a problem with officers asking, matter of fact, that's kinda what we've been talking about, they need to ask for permission, they're inside a home, but. I don't think they, they will be turning it on if they're going to visit someone with a cr- a victim of a crime. They're not gonna turn that on unless something escalates or something happens, then I think they're covered by policy to do that. I don't think you're gonna see a whole bunch of video of just random homes and things like that. I mean, we don't turn on our recorder now and we have access to our squad car, we don't turn on the recorder in the squad car to capture a conversation or, or evidence. I mean, we just don't, from a victim, because they gotta testify to it anyway.
Are there any other questions on the policy side? Andy? It's more of a statement, I, I, I like the heavy medium that we have here with. Officer discretion and a sound policy to ensure that there's privacy. So I would like to support this, I'm throwing that out there, that's it.
All right, so I'm, I'm done with the policy, I'll, I'll support what we have here. So the last part that I have, where I have concern is, uh, putting another task on Lisa. You've mentioned a number of times how overvoted she is, you're concerned about when she retires, how we're gonna be able to replace her. Now it seems like we're throwing another fairly large task on her to manage the video system. So where is she gonna get the time to do this? Are we planning it next year, the following year for you to come back for?
No, so the server we have now is about, uh, twelve years old.
No, not the server, not in time.
Yes, well, that's part of this whole situation. It takes her that long of time because the arbitrator system is not updated, it's never been updated. Since you guys purchased the arbitrator system, it's never received one single update. So because of that, it takes forever to do this. With the new arbitrator and the new server, this will take minutes, it's not gonna take hours like it does now. Right now, we, we do all kinds of open, uh, record requests and they take forever because you gotta burn the video almost double the time it takes to, to do it. Once we get on the new arbitrator server, it'll be that quick. And you guys, uh, who were there, received that information from our techs, it will be night and day. As far as redaction, it'll be set up where if, if we don't want that face, it will just, you know, you just click and go. It'll be a lot faster than what we're doing now, so in actuality, uh, it, it isn't gonna increase any of her time at all.
Okay.
That actually, it'd actually be better because, because of the system she's in right now. And again, it doesn't, she doesn't have to physically do anything, she just sets it to record and does her job, it just kinda works behind the, behind the scene.
Someone's gotta tell the video is going.
Yeah, she, yeah, she, she loads that up, she loads it up and lets it work. Right now, it takes a while for it to, you know, do that, so if she's gonna go to lunch, she just calls me and says, hey, we gotta keep an eye on that recorder, that's it. This will speed it up, I, we did body cams at, uh, at Darlington and they were quick. It burns them a lot quicker if you have a lot better system. The system isn't set up right now to handle all of this work, but it will be. So it's not gonna add anything.
From you that will not be needing more personnel to run this program?
No.
It, it sounds like the software, you can build your policy into it, like you can say this is evidence, say how many days.
Yeah, someone's gotta tell it that it's happened.
It's, it'll be set up that way.
Right.
So it, it's not, it's doing it on the backend, you're not, you're not physically having to do work. You set it up where this call at a hundred and eighty days is gone and it'll just.
Normally what you have to do is find part of your server and protect it, so have an evidence part, so limited people can get in. Someone's gotta take the video and make it go to that part, the rest goes to a hundred and eighty day loop and it goes through. Someone asked that, tell the computer that this one is evidence and goes into the secure part of your server.
The other thing that's a lot faster now is than even before you were around, we, uh, we no longer burn DVDs and take them to the DA's office. They go, they go in a link and they're, they go across electronically, so it saves us hundreds of hours. We don't, we're not doing, even since I, when I started here, they had it where you had to burn it and then drive it downtown, we don't do that anymore.
All right, any other questions for anybody? Well, I'm all shot.
I'm, I'm sorry, probably fixing that integrity move sitting here.
If, I, I, my biggest thing is, uh, if, if the chief doesn't think there's conflict, I personally, as an officer, I would be uncomfortable. On what do I follow? Do I follow D or do I follow this? You know, again, my whole thought of it, what, it's all on the definition of what's integrity, right?
Yep, so, I mean.
So, I, I'm gonna say, if the chief is comfortable, as an officer, I would be uncomfortable.
So I'm comfortable with it, but if there's something better, uh, to put in there, I, I'm not gonna hang up, hang this up on one word. To me, i- if there's something that any of you can come up with, it's fine.
What is it, in your head, what is it in your head? That's what I'm.
The intent of it is not to. If, if you're working on something, right, you have, you're maintaining the integrity of that investigation.
Right.
You don't want to say that you cannot turn it on. You, in my opinion, you can't handcuff the officer one way or another, whether it is to shut it off or to turn it on. Let's say, for instance, you're working the case and all of a sudden you figure out this is a victim, not a. And, and, and you want her to continue to talk, but she's not really willing to talk anymore because she knows she's being reported. Then we should be able to say, okay, you're a victim of a crime, um, do you want me to shut this off and shut it off? Unless it is to, unless you can't, because for instance, let's say she's lying and you've collected other pieces of evidence to support that. Then that's my, my thought behind it. But if, if that is something that's trouble, obviously it's troubling people, so we can change that, it is just a word to me.
Like I said, I'm just giving you my feedback on that, and since I did this for a while, I know officers are always wanting to know what the rules are. And when you're in conflict, it puts you in a difficult.
I'll just make a couple comments, um, as far as being a public safety committee. Um, Chief told me he had two area police chiefs speak with us, we've also listened to his staff. And I consider both him and the staff, you know, professional partners and how we run our village. I think it's similar to some of the less than lethal stuff where a lot of people kinda assumed we had these types of tools. So I look at it as another tool. In my role of work, uh, when we have policies, they, they should be looked at as you use them practically, fine. So I think we've got a lot of best practices, so a lot of learning from a lot of people have done. And I think, um, it's a tool that's, that's needed in our community. And, uh, you know, I fully support it, I'll be happy to make the motion, but I think that, uh, the public safety, we just spent a lot of time and got a lot of great information, both from chief police officers. Within our village and also outside and surrounding areas, so I'm, I'm very comfortable with. Equipment and the start of the process.
Doug, I appreciate that, I, and reading this over and over, I've read it now like seven times. I think all of this is covered in C and D, I don't have any issue just putting a period right after safety and eliminating the integrity. Because it's already covered in policy, in D, in, in, in C and D, I.
Andy, I mean, and then again, like if we discover a policy that's in, in, involved and addressed, we can do that. This seems like a really, 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 really great place to start, let's, let's get it going.
So I, I would like to have that included in my motion that we put the period out here to say.
Why don't you go ahead? You don't have a motion out of that, so.
I'll make the motion to approve, uh, with the one change.
There's two changes, sorry, Doug.
Go ahead.
Uh, the other change, I think that makes sense, is under F, to just add C in there, just so they can reference that back, that, that's fine, that's just another way to cover it. I think the biggest portions of that, of that portion of the policy is C and D, so if F, if you wanna kind of reference it back to C is fine, I can just add that.
Yeah, I'll second that motion. All right, so the motion and second and discussion, you didn't put the comments, right?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Bill? So, the only, uh, the only comment I have is, is I, I agree with all the conversation on home privacy. That we are, we are a society of less privacy each day goes by. Uh, but I also, uh, watched what happened in twenty twenty. And, uh, the lack of protection that the, that the police officer had visually, uh, in, in the riots that happened in, at almost every major city here in the United States. So, um, for that reason, I am fully supportive of this, of this, uh, tool.
All right, let's do a roll call, please.
Trusty Brochus.
Yes.
Trusty Thuzius.
Yes.
Trusty Brenner.
Yes.
Trusty Paul Mikowski.
Yes.
Trusty Herman.
Yeah.
President Langford.
Yes. All right, here it is. We are going to number two, discussion and possible action regarding the twenty twenty-two budget. Uh, how we're gonna start this out is what I'd like to do is just get a feel from or on where you're at. On, uh, the tax levy increase, and then I will update you on what has occurred since I wrote that memo. On updating your, on the budget, so I'm just gonna go around and what I'm looking for is. A percent would be the easiest to do, what you think a percent increase in the tax levy, uh, for twenty twenty-two budget would be, what would be reasonable? I'm gonna start with you, Bill.
Uh. Yeah.
Who's here? Kevin?
I don't know.
Would you have an idea?
No, I think this is, uh, no.
Okay.
I, I would rather go the other direction, so where you pick a choice of it, you kind of, wherever we land is where we land based on the validity of each request instead of based on random numbers, so I'm gonna ask.
Okay. Doug?
Um, I'll say somewhere we went to three.
Andy?
Um, I think it's based on D, so I'm not going to pick an arbitrary number as well, but we could definitely, uh. Probably just, we'll get where we want to be and make. Probably just forget where we want to be and make a decision based on that, take them actual.
Okay, Michael?
Uh. Yeah, I don't know about a percentage. I think in the back of my head, I don't want to go above two, but then again, it's all based upon how we talk about. What we feel needs are and merit of the other, and merit of each individual request as well.
Okay. And I'm at two percent. Also, you see uh new construction, inflation and coal. All right. All right, so update on that uh budget memo that I sent you. Unfortunately, we only have bad news. Uh we lost thirty two thousand dollars in transportation aid. Um with the new formula, so we have went from three hundred and sixteen thousand. Down to like two hundred and eighty two, something like that. It's a difference of about thirty two thousand dollars. Um and we'll be talking about it uh later with EMS. Our percentage went up to uh fifty nine point two percent, so we had an increase in that. Uh the only good news is health insurance, um so the lowest bid uh did not go up. A great deal. So that that's a positive. Bobby, can you fill us in on what else we're waiting for that could affect the budget?
Um we have not gotten the numbers for exempt computer aid, but I really don't expect that to change the general fund portion. It's fifty five hundred dollars, so I don't think it'll change too much from that. Uh obviously EMS budget is not final like you just mentioned. And then we, the final um assessment values haven't been released. Right now, we're just using an estimate. And that usually comes out towards the end of October. Uh I guess I would like to point out, um I know you guys are really focusing on the tax levy percent increase, but. I would really encourage you to look more like the tax rate increase, because right now um. The budget that's in the packet, the levy increase is one point eight one percent. But it's estimated, you know, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, your tax bill only about three dollars and thirty six cents on that one point eight one percent. So the tax rate increase is only point one six percent. So, you know, don't focus so heavily on the levy percent increase, it's more the tax rate percent. That's my two cents.
All right, um let's uh start. We'll do each of these individually. So we'll start with A, the proposed base budget. Remind everybody. Uh base budget was a one percent increase across all uh line items. So that was the the starting point, and then from there, it went to supplement uh. Request. So is there uh any, let's, let's do discussion first so we can get a. Uh a motion, then we don't have to do amendments. So is anybody got concerns with uh one percent across board? That would have been what within the budget that was handed out a few months ago? No, are there any questions at all on that?
I have two questions.
Go ahead, Michael.
One was, um, there's this real quick. Why did fire go down and why did EMS go up? Did EMS go up because we're now paying a larger percentage or it's not done? Because it went up apparently, right?
Okay, that's not the base budget. That's, that's gonna be coming up. I think that's actually listed. I'm not. Okay, I think I'll cover me on that. That's not part. The one percent is not part of that.
Okay.
I'm talking about the one percent of the village budget. That's what we're talking about right now.
It was just, it was just something that it was.
Yes, I I I guess I thought it was on here, so I will, at the end, I will show everybody.
Okay.
You have two, what is yours?
No, is this the MS file?
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Anybody else? All right, do I have a motion to accept the proposed base budget? I will make that motion. Second, all right, I have a motion in the second. Is there any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All all same. All right, we're at B. It's the supplement for the library phone system. That is. To be your uh, I guess they're not numbers. It's uh communications. One, they had one thousand six hundred and fifty um for their base budget. Their proposal is four thousand seven hundred and ninety four. So it's three thousand one fifty over the one percent. It's on the phone system currently, the one is fifteen years old and they're having problems with that. It's not being maintained.
I move to approve the new budget for the telephone system, supplement of budget request from the library.
Second, uh I have a motion in a second. Is there any?
Bill? Did we look into consolidating phone systems between the library and the village? Because we were going to. I mean, that was, that was an item that we talked about, because both need new phone systems.
Oh, yeah.
So we were, we were requested to look at that. We decided not to move forward with that, the the village hall uh phone system. Uh because it's, it's currently working for for us and we, it seemed to be that we were on different time schedule. A new phone system. And so we understood that they needed a phone system now. We weren't ready to to assess it.
How long do we think we're, uh, current phone system approach is gonna be useful for?
Well, it it's functioning now. I don't know. I mean, I don't know what the. From my understanding of what was happening with the the library phone system, it was. And and I don't think we're at that point yet. It's functioning as it should. Is it, could it be improved to be more efficient and more effective? Yeah, but uh as far as the the maintenance of the system. Uh although it lasts, I don't think that we pay anything for uh general maintenance and replacement of phones. And which all, if a service, we don't. So we couldn't justify that large of an increase to our current phone system. Very bad. It's it's functioning.
Would we be able to, you add on to this particular phone system in the future if we needed to? Do we know?
So my understanding is that we wouldn't part the library for their system. Uh because of the uh internet carrier.
Well, I can address some of that. I'm on the library board. This is a, this is a cloud-based phone system that's being uh TDS is putting in an internet line for this. So I think that if the village hall or if we build a new village hall, they went with TDS as their internet carrier. I think that they could, we could expand our, this this contract and then put more phones under its umbrella. Yeah, yeah. And then if we want to go more so, we could put other phones in the village underneath it if they have internet connection. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, so that's, that's gonna match. Could we use this as a base?
Yeah.
We have to grow or change within the village.
It's i- i- it's not a computer sitting in a room. It's a cloud-based system, so it has all, and it's branch TDS. I think it has all kinds of flexibility.
Okay. My understanding, this is a full-tv cost, so this is an annual cost.
Yes, that is a three-year. There is a three-year contract, so this is going to be a recurring cost every year. It doesn't end after three years.
Oh, it doesn't?
No.
It continues. It's a, it's. The the whole system where you would pay upfront cost for installation and and technology, and then just pay a service. All of that's built into the service plan. So although the contracts are three-year contracts, the cost continues to be on that. To maintain.
So i- is your cost of all this, like a bill, a a monthly bill you still get?
This is, this is, it's basically moving their communications budget from sixteen fifty to. Uh moving it up thirty one fifty a year is what it's doing.
Okay, but is there any more?
No.
I thought this was for the hardware.
No, 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 no. Be, no, no, no. This is, this is what it is, and this is what the bill is from TDS. This forty seven ninety four, the proposed amount covers everything, all their phones. It's like the phones and the voicemail system. It's, that's why it's being moved up. Before, they had a computer there. That's fifteen years old.
Or no? No, I'm just trying to understand. I I I'm not questioning anything. I thought this was to buy new phones and then there'd be a monthly charge. You're saying that this includes monthly charge and the equipment?
Yeah, because getting into the contract, if you get into the contract and you. Buy eight phones or ten phones, they're giving them to you for free because you're getting into it through your contract. They're actually giving the hardware for free.
But what it does is it takes like the uh the maintenance out of the village. And make sure that everything is working fundamentally fine for the library.
Right.
Which is, which is like up to speed with.
Quick the budget, and we know it's going to be forty seven ninety five.
It's going to be forty, the the to simple, to say this, the village, the library's communication budget is going to be forty seven ninety five. Like forever. It's not.
Well, three years.
Well, right, but it's unless you buy an in-premise voicemail system in the fourth year, it'll continue to be that if you renew your contract. Well, it's very possible, but all you have is a three-year term.
Right, oh, I hear what you're saying. Hey, it's it's TDS, not Spectrum.
Uh, I'm a TDS missile, yeah.
Well, it's all right. Did everybody understand that?
So, so that's what was done. I I went back and forth with Pam on this for amount. I put time into it. They were wanting to put a switch in there that they were gonna bill us. Thirty dollars a month for for three years. I was like, you can buy one of these things for three hundred, four hundred dollars. She wrote a thing to TDS. They're like, and I was like, can we just buy our own and put it back there? TDS was like, no, we don't want to do it, but rather than thirty dollars a month, we'll rent it to you for five. All I had to do was answer. Save twenty five dollars a month off the contract. Like on the, this. I just went through that bill and basically questioned every single line and got it down as low as I could.
All right, anybody have any other questions on that?
Can I take it, you looked at other options, like. Buy new equipment and just.
Been looking at it for two years.
Okay.
You're gonna get all.
All right, we, we just did the same thing in our office with TDS, and it's a little bit. It's about the same price, maybe a little bit more actually. Um and just the 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 transfer, the process of moving it over was a nightmare. So I guess I'll, the the library should be ready for some period of time without all of this books, so if this happens. It is not what I thought it was when I, when I read it. I thought it was equipment in a contract for you, so. I thought it was worth it because we did it and I trust the process that we get here, but uh it's a shame.
Yeah, it was, so we wanted, but getting into a premise-free system was going to cost. Ten to fifteen thousand dollars and so it's kind of a waiting, uh waiting thing of, is it gonna be. Paying a lot of profit or you try to spread it out and not have any maintenance that goes along with it. It was, this is the. Balancing thing. One of the, and all this, if you guys want, and I know one of the unfortunate things about this is the fact that they go through the South Central Library System to provide their internet. And because this phone system is an in-flight, it has to use internet to go out. They weren't able to get onto the South Central Internet System because these aren't South Central devices, so they actually have to have a separate internet line coming in. For the phones explicitly. It's, it's a redundancy that is insurmountable, it sounds like. So in the event that if you want to move this to Villa Tall, where they're gonna have internet, they can, their internet and phone are going down the same. And you get the same pipe, you get cost savings next.
Okay, do I have a motion or do we?
There has been already a motion.
Oh, there has. Okay, so we read the session. All right, uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All all same, so. Okay, we'll go into season thoroughly. That's library, part-time employees supplement. I'm just wondering why we didn't throw this in with our salary discussion. Earlier in the month, but.
They're not full-time employees.
Well, that doesn't matter. We will do compensation for employees. I didn't think you said full-time, but.
Can you make that a little larger, Bill? I think we don't even need a supplemental for this. I think. We just, she has in there already in the, what I used to calculate the.
That's the one percent.
Yeah, it's still over one thousand.
Yeah, they're asking for twelve fifteen over the one percent increase.
I move to approve part-time wage benefits request from the library.
All right, I have a motion and a second discussion. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All all same. All right, we're in D as in David. This is uh. Going from last year, we moved her to thirty hours uh per week, and now they're asking to go to forty plus two dollars. I have a motion.
I guess I have a question. Uh do I not understand the math? This, it just doesn't look great to me. It's over double.
Because you gotta put it uh full time.
I want to give a presentation on it.
I understand that. It just felt, it seems like a whole heck of a lot from ten hours of this. I understand that.
I guess my concern is we bumped it from twenty thirty last year with a increase. Uh I guess I haven't seen the ad uh to support this, and I, I just don't think we can do it at this time. I think we gotta do it more than one year to see how things uh pan out and. So I guess I'm not going to be in favor of this increase right now. Andy?
I just think, you know, we're a growing municipality. We're definitely gonna need more support and, you know, our administrative staff is already. Working pretty hard. Let's uh, let's go ahead and do it and. But the, you know, the outcome, that we're gonna benefit long-term with this, and we could definitely use that. Yeah, I also feel that uh this is akin to the public facilities, where we're looking at, you know, two months ago, a month ago. Trying to retain, get and retain good people, and uh we know it's more and more difficult to do that. And I think we've got a good person in that position now, uh she's been incredibly helpful for for us recently in a couple things. I know it's a hit, but I'm certainly in support of getting uh getting this position up to forty hours at full time.
Bobby?
Uh another thing that's been discussed kind of internally, I don't know, Jay might have heard this too. Um so then Lisa retires. She currently has two positions, you know, police administrative assistant and then municipal court clerk. So there has been discussions of breaking that off and giving Becky the municipal court clerk hours. Um to help, you know, fill the time or. Just because they thought maybe Lisa would. Or, you know, that position would need more. So that was just the kind of thing to um, you know, promoting that. To move that position to the forty hours.
Jay, yeah, I'll just make a quick comment. Um so Lisa has acquired over the past twenty-five years. A lot of responsibility, just every time there was a new addition. So she's not only doing those things, but she's also. Um does a lot of our technology stuff um with regards to tracks and some, some software that that we have to handle. With regards to our citations and those kind of things. It's, it's already a full-time job. She has just managed to be able to juggle all of these. But upon her retirement, I don't think we'll be able to find someone that will be able to do all of her functions plus the court functions. I mean, sometimes I I walk in the office, she's got both phones. I mean, she's. I mean, she's, she's that good, but I, you know, to train someone new, she's acquired these things over the course of, of her twenty five year career. So I, I know that she's thinking about retiring, uh, she has made it known to me and I think some other people, so I think that's going to be a real conversation. Um, the other thing, just having court separated from the police department um, is something that we should probably consider just anyway. Uh, people call the police department to deal with us, and now we've enforced the law, and then she's got to turn around and be the clerk at the same time. It just it gives it a really weird feeling, right? So whether we go part-time or, 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 uh, fill this in with this employee, I think it'll have to be a true conversation in two thousand twenty-two going into twenty-three.
So when, when is Lisa thinking about retiring? Does she's?
Uh, she has not given me a date, so I just know that it, it, soon, uh, probably not in twenty-two.
Well, I, I just want to comment. So, um, I don't want to get too carried about, carried away about the conversation in evolving, uh, whether it be job, job descriptions or job expectations, because that's not what's on the agenda. And we've been using names, we shouldn't be using names, we're using positions. I do encourage that the village board do look at potentially the job duties and responsibilities that is becoming of these positions. Particularly for frontline positions that are becoming harder to look, uh, for harder to find people to employ. And so that's through this wage benefit committee, the job description, uh, future organizational, uh, development. I would encourage, uh, that, that organization to look, take a look at that, the work, take a look at that, consider the wages and competition number, yes, so. Uh, again, this, this should, this decision should be based on what's imposed tonight. Uh, and responsibilities to that part of the settlement, the other conversation in regards to what was discussed tonight.
Um, I, well, I just want to say, I recently was up at Villatoll doing some documents research and, uh, got to interact uh, with Becky a fair amount, and she is fantastic at the job that she does up at Villatoll, just discussions with her. She's taken on more and more responsibilities as she moved from just reading meters to that being a two to three day experience, and now she can get it done in half a day, figuring out how things work, just even other software pieces, et cetera. She seems like she's busy all the time.
Um, so my, I kind of, I was just around if we could just do the raise part to put it at thirty, if there is the need for the additional technics, it's immediate. I understand that, support it. But I don't see that here, I guess. Um, so, you know, if there's a way to approve it at the nineteen episode instead of thirty, then get some more info. Um, that's a possibility.
Anything's, uh, a possibility. I, I just think it's too soon to move this up. We need to study it and actually look at as Bill said, that's what the committee's going to do, look at all the job descriptions and see if we can become more efficient and just automatically increase hours, um, so, and it's a high price tag. Kevin?
Yeah, I, I wonder if that committee gets to work and, um, we do look at some job descriptions, some efficiencies. Um, if maybe we could hedge our bets and, and put this as a full-time position come January one. Uh, the impact of the twenty twenty-two budget would be significantly less, at least the amount in excess of one, one percent would be roughly half that thirty-two thousand dollar price tag, right? I'm thinking about this, correct? Um, and then, and then if it's a place, we're, we're ready to do it if it's there. If we're not ready for that, we take a decision otherwise, then that'll leave out of the budget.
I guess, I don't think we should be taxing people for something that may come in future. I understand where you're coming from, but if we were going to do I, I guess I'm, I'm not sure why this is a necessity for twenty twenty-two, why it can't be studied in twenty twenty-two, and then it's more to move it in twenty twenty-three. I can tell you, this is, we are spending a lot of money right now, and, uh, I think, uh, I think it's something that's a justification, because I want to hear a call about your study. Any other comments? Bill?
We're, I thought we were going to start studying it when we, when, kind of made this position initially, right?
We did study and we moved it up to thirty and increased it by two dollars an hour last year. Am I correct?
Yeah, it was like two or two fifteen.
Bobby's responsibility. We did study it, we came up with a proposal.
Right.
And that's what we did, what we've been doing for the last, uh, eight months, for nine months.
Right.
So that's where we're at right now. So that's what, uh, we bumped it up hours and we bumped up salary.
So we don't, we don't know for the last nine months if, if she's overworked or needs to do more work, or, I mean, I'm just kind of throwing that out there. It's like, she's coasting right now at thirty, or she's struggling to keep thirty and we want her to do more work?
Wh- when I was up there, she was working the whole time.
What does that mean? What's that? Oh, yeah, sorry. Uh, Bill, can you elaborate on what you mean by coasting?
So is she, is she able to maintain her bulk of work at thirty hours? Me that's Colston, alright, or is she struggling to get her day of work done, or thirty hours of work done in a work week because she has so much extra work to do? We should know that after nine months of having her being in that, in that position. That's my point.
I, I can, I can settle a little bit. So, uh, at the beginning of the year, we increased her hours, thirty hours. The position hours, two thirty hours, increased pay because of the responsibilities that she has with, with uh, the building inspection program with partner right, and most, most items on the general, so. Uh, throughout this year, uh, and through the reporting, we found that there's going to have to be a front-end increase in hours responsibilities on the utilities side, water source. Uh, we are still in the process of studying that because we are in the process of studying the system as well. You know that these costs are coming, and this is those trying to add to that. So that, that way you can see the allocation of cost of utilities, uh, but we fully expect that to eat up the day and night holes.
Any others? Andy?
Yeah, I just think we should invest in our personnel and make them feel confident and secure in what they're doing and that they're getting compensated for what they're doing, the more we're asking of them. So I'd, I'd like to approve this and I'm done.
Alright, so I just, just, we did, that was at our last meeting, we increased everybody with the whole package of all thirty-two thousand, so we're increasing one employee thirty-two thousand. Just to put it in perspective, I think we are taking care of our employees, but this is a, a very large one.
Yeah, my implication is not that we're not taking care of our employees, that we need to take care of this one in particular.
Alright, any other comments? We're gonna do a roll call at all of this.
There's not a motion.
There's no, oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have to vote on our, if we table this, since it's such a large ass?
Well, here, okay, everybody, this is what the plan is going to be. I'll let you give, I'm calling a special meeting for the second Monday in October for budget only. We, what we approved, now we are going to calculate all the what we've all approved and show what the impact is going to be to the taxpayer, and then we're going to well, we're gonna talk about it and see what happens with that, and by the end of that, we'll have a final one, uh, to have a public hearing in November. We need, this, uh, noticed it so many days and we can't do it with, uh, meeting in October, so we're gonna have to do it. We will have then a much better idea of what the cost that we're talking about. So that so we're not, what you're basically doing is supporting that, but it's not part of, it's not necessarily, we can't change the budget when we talk about the budget as a whole.
That's what my.
You're changing this into pieces, so.
That's.
Yeah, it's basically saying, Bobby, put that in the spreadsheet and see what happens.
Okay, that was, sometimes I'm.
And then make a motion to approve the, this supplemental as opposed.
So good.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Roll call, roll.
Trustee Fuzius.
Yes.
Trustee Brochus.
Yep.
Trustee Hartman.
Yes.
Trustee Paul Mikowski.
Yes.
Trustee Brunner.
No.
President Langford.
No. Motion carries. Alright, we're to the next one. We have economic development and tourism program supplement. Bill, this is one of yours.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll talk about, can I talk about the next three kind of that one?
Go for it.
And then you can make your, your. So the intention of, of these next three items is not development and tourism programs, supplemental, uh, supplemental, main street maintenance supplemental. These are all intended to address the issue of economic development, uh, the goal that was, yeah, uh, and called out. And so this is not, uh, considering the, the motions that have been made this evening in, uh, the direction that the village board has directed at the, uh, the wage meeting. As the minister, then my recommendation would be to, uh, defer these or table these until a future budget, uh, to address what's the priority currently. So in, in saying that these aren't, I, I don't believe that these are, uh, as high priority as our employees. However, these do need to be addressed, especially in the upcoming years, uh, economic development will currently engage in, in, on several of those efforts now, uh, going to close session, we have those discussions, close session. For sound supplementals, uh, add some ma- maintenance item, uh, and, and providing uh, some kind of benefit and incentive, uh, to our local businesses. Uh, and then the main street maintenance, apparently we, we do not have anything budgeted for replacement in or repair. Those are coming out of the departmental budgets currently. Uh, we have a lot of items that have been dominated, and if those are, uh, if those deteriorate or, uh, are incident, accident, then it was, they have to have the cost, um, that's my spiel. And again, my recommendation tonight would be to defer these to the, to the.
Alright, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to defer these three items to next to.
I will, I will second that motion.
Alright, I have a motion and a second to defer items, E is in Edward, F is in Frank, and G is in George. Uh, was just all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All poll the same, so move. Alright, H, Bill, you want to take this one, Bill?
Yeah, so this is a request from the MPO, um.
It's, yeah, uh, one for me.
So, yeah, this is a request from the MPO. It's been a while since they, they sent out a request to all the Dane County municipalities, right, Mass, Metorial. Uh, they do provide a service and then they provide studies, uh, data, uh, in the situation that we could be able to utilize it if needed. Uh, it's not a requirement that the village participate in this, uh, but it's, it's encouraged. It's, our, our cost of this would be, uh, one thousand four hundred eighty-four. Uh, there is a mixed, uh, response from, from other communities outside of Madison. Uh, a handful of them are going to their, their current, uh, boards and, yeah, councils to ask for this. Again, in the past, from what I've heard from those communities, this has become strictly a, uh, whether, but there's budget. So, yeah, it's, it's a request without the necessary rate for consideration.
Alright, do I have a motion? I'm going to approve. I have a second.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second, correct, discussion. Bill?
I'm not in favor of this at all. I think it's a, I, I, I don't think it's a good use of our money. Uh, we're not going to have transportation from Madison, uh, into Cross Plains either by rail or by, by, uh, bus. Um, they can study all they want. I, I don't think it's a good use of our money.
Andy? I would disagree wholeheartedly, Bill, that we definitely need to do transportation into the Cross Plains from Madison, from Middleton.
I'm not saying, I, I'm not saying that we don't need it. I'm saying we're not going to get it. I, I just. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No worries. Uh, well, I mean, this is, this is starting point, right? This is, this is where you start this process, trying to figure out, can we, can we do it? How do we do it? What's the best normal operation, cost effectiveness? How do we cooperate with them to do this? Uh, so, for fourteen hundred bucks, I think it's worth it.
Yeah, I'm going to speak. I'm in Bill's, uh, thing. I don't think this is a good way of spending our taxpayers' money. The money will be growing. Most of their planning is in Madison and the communities that directly connect, uh, uh, to Madison. I, I don't think we will get any benefit from, from this. I am just speculating, but I don't think we even talk about Cross Plain in this group. Uh, I just don't think, even though it's fourteen hundred, that's still fourteen hundred dollars that taxpayers had to work hard for that this, we will not get our money's worth on this, and I do not think. Kevin?
Yeah, Bill, have we, have we used anything from them the last couple of years since you've been here?
Since I've been here, we, we have not. Uh, there's a question of whether or not we did use some of that data for, uh, main street, uh, and we won't, we were planning to use for that, but.
Yeah. The only time I remember reducing that is when there was a proposal to bring boss out here, and that was a boss of fifty dollars, and that's what I that's going to be my hard question.
And then my follow-up question is, the, uh, does our engineer provide a lot of this, or other consultants provide a lot of this data as well? Do you have more data?
I believe we have other sources of, of other resources.
Maybe? Anybody else? Andy?
Uh, so, so Bill, and what, what's the, what's the ask? Wondering why, why this set of data?
Why was this, uh, prior to supplement?
Yeah.
Uh, it was a, a request from, uh, anyone in that condition. Uh, it wasn't something that I believe I could answer, uh, and so uh, it felt unnecessary to have the board, uh, as it's, it's obviously going to affect the community, uh, and then looking for uh, it's going to continue to be whether or not we continue to participate to make that, that, uh, addition to our.
Andy? Even though we might not benefit from it directly, I think it's important to have inroads to our, you know, corresponding municipalities in the greater Dane County Madison area, and so I think it's worth the fourteen hundred dollars. So I'm just gonna stand by supporting this, and that's, that's it.
Alright, anybody else? Roll call, roll please.
Trustee Hartman?
Yes.
Trustee Paul Mikowski.
No.
Trustee Brunner.
Yes.
Trustee Fuzius.
No.
Trustee Brochus.
No.
President Langford.
No. Motion is not carried. Alright. Aye. Cross Plains, uh, area chamber of commerce supplement request. You want to take that or?
Yeah, I can, I can take this. Uh, so, uh, so this is a supplemental request from the, the Cross Plains area chamber of commerce. Uh, in previous years, the village has contributed to a large such portion of their annual budget, at that time it was, it was fifteen thousand uh, annually. In the, in, uh, most recent year, uh, or a year and a half here, they've had somewhat fortunate events with, with their executive director leaving. And then obviously with COVID, and so at that time the village board, uh, decided to suspend, uh, contribution or, or, or this payment to, uh, uh, chamber until the chamber was able to provide a plan for, we believe that they have at this point, I believe they are currently looking for an executive director, and I think they're actually going to the process of hiring right now as a part-time position at this point. Uh, we did ask, uh, we're directly, uh, the village has positioned whole thousand dollars. Uh, we did ask, uh, where directly, uh, the village has positioned twelve thousand dollars to go to, and the response was that it would be towards a higher position. Uh, so that's my understanding of that, at this point, they are, are continuing to ramp up their operations. I believe, uh, this past year, they were involved, uh, golf bowling. I believe they're planning for wine walk again this year. But without an executive director, it seems like they're kind of stuck in, in home man's land here. So that, again, is the ask, I believe, put it is, uh, the request letter.
Yeah, motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Second discussion.
Um, I'll make a, a few comments, I do believe that the chamber is valuable. If we're gonna be a tourism-based economy, come enjoy Cross Plains, come enjoy, I think, come enjoy, come enjoy fishing. They had thirty-three foursomes at their golf bowling a couple of Fridays back. Uh, there was live music at two local facilities Sunday night. Um, there are some new businesses coming to town, Coltrudes, Vessel, Endress is investing. I think there's some good leadership on their board, uh, Candace Monte, Katie Rip. There's, I think there's a lot of momentum, and I think this will be a group that will be very beneficial to what we're trying to accomplish.
All right, I'd like to comment, um, I'm gonna agree with a lot of what Doug said. I've met with the board, uh, a very strong board, they have a lot of great ideas. I think we had a very good discussion on what planes the chamber states in, what's named. Bill does, even though there's a lack of operation, mediation on top, whether each other's things, but it seems like the core ideas coming from the chambers would be, they want to set up a mentoring program, or when new businesses come in, they can marry up with a business that's better out, and help them pull through the approval process, or understanding, uh, the interworkings of the village. They're also kind of a key factor, and as Doug mentioned, tourism. Uh, we don't really want Bill working on bringing the facts to the village. Uh, he's more looking at bringing businesses, helping businesses with finance part of it. I think those two roles that they're looking to play, plus as a avenue for us as a board to know what the business community's thinking and what they would like, uh, changes in policy. I think are very beneficial for those three objectives of the chambers. As you know, economic development was one of my high priorities. And this fits right in with it. So I was a hundred percent behind, uh, the twelve thousand. I am concerned about, uh, the taxes and the spending. So, uh, I was looking at reducing this from the twelve thousand. I don't know what kind of an impact that will have, but, uh, I'm just concerned with those, I mean, what the numbers are gonna look at. Look, uh, when we're all done. So I'm totally a hundred percent of giving them some money. I guess I'm not totally convinced you can afford the twelve thousand, that's my understanding. Kevin, and then Andy.
I've, I've continued to be a supporter of the chamber, I think when they lost their executive director, they lost that face, uh, and, uh, seemed to wander a bit, and, um, and frankly, I just sort of, you know, lost, uh, I was concerned that they may have lost their way, and, and I'm, would probably not have been supportive of this unless, um, except for that they are looking to hire another executive director in the near future. I think having that point person, that face, uh, makes a real big difference. And so I'm, uh, I'm in support of, of the requested twelve thousand.
Andy?
Uh, yep, echo some of those concerns and, and thoughts. I, I guess if we're gonna throw down twelve thousand dollars, if this has historically been the, the support that the village board has given, you know, let's, let's keep that up, and, you know, having to, whether a pandemic was probably not, you know, ideal for the, uh, chamber. And so I'd, I'd say let's, let's give them, you know, their twelve thousand and, and definitely get it back and right the ship. So that's what I said.
Bill? I'm kind of with you, Jay. I think the chamber's gone through some, some, uh, positive maybe those cycles in the last several years, not just, not just since, uh, COVID. And, uh, you know, although the chamber is a, is a powerful institution for our village, I, 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 I like to hold back a couple thousand dollars if they need it. Yes, if, if we find it after they hire their executive director, and they come back and they said, next year, you know, this is something that we needed for a specific reason, then maybe we consider it as a board. But I would be more willing to give ten than twelve thousand dollars. At this time.
All right, anybody else? Michael?
I'm in support of this also. Um, I think you've kind of explained the main things, right, with the mentoring, approval process, and that's, that kind of like was pretty much what or two you were talking about. That was one of my concerns about. I mean, I know the chambers had a part-time and, uh, employee, this, we're essentially hiring an ancillary village employee, or not really, but we're providing funding for one, or we're focusing on ours. Is that a good idea or not? But it sounds like the streams aren't gonna cross. So I'm in support, whether that's twelve, whether that's ten, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how all the numbers are gonna fall out.
Right, any other comments? So, motion is at twelve thousand. Right now, so it's all.
Trustee Paul McCoskey?
Yes.
Trustee Hartman?
Yes.
Trustee Brochus?
No.
Trustee Thuzius?
Yes.
Trustee Brunner?
Yes.
President Langford?
Yes. All right, uh, employee wage, uh, adjustment supplement, is this different than what we approved at the last meeting? I, I guess I was, I don't know if it's you.
We didn't.
Yeah, we didn't approve, there is no motion to approve it, so there was.
Oh, I see, so we're going, okay, I see what we're doing.
And then formalizing it. Correct, so tonight we would be formalizing it, there is a note in there in regards to, uh, a request from the, uh, library director and Trustee McCoskey, uh, representing the library board, uh, in regards to the amendment of supplements. Those are the, the only.
Okay, what I'd like to do is break that out, since we have a very long discussion. So let's do what was agreed upon at the last meeting. That would be our, our first, uh, motion. I'm making a motion to approve. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
I, 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 I wanna say yes, or I, I think I'm in agreement, but I just wanna clarify, is that sure? Yes, I hope we're looking at tonight.
Sure.
And, and how is this different than number three?
Three is about.
The salary range.
Oh.
Remember we talked, how we separated the two? So if we go to, let's give all, all your requests. Unless, I mean, you can do it, I'm just, uh, you go to the report.
Yeah, we're on page, page one eighteen of the PDF.
PDF one eighteen?
Well, we're on one thirty-two, one forty-eight.
Yeah.
J, right, one eighteen is number three.
That's number.
So like goes backwards? Oh, one eighteen is the link, is what you're talking about.
So, I, so we provided that information in the summary because of the, the cash flow was so large. Uh, so if you are one eighteen, that's where your number is in regards to twenty twenty-two impact, uh, and there was a minor, minor correction, we get, uh, the chief's position, yeah, I think some eighty thousand dollars. There for, for eighty thousand dollars next year, so worth a bump there for overall of the.
So what you're looking at is, look at, uh, what he, yeah, the one nineteen, where the twenty twenty-two whole was raised. That's what, that's what you're approving.
Yeah, that's like page fifteen of that linked page, right?
Yeah, but you can find, he's got it on here, it starts.
Right.
It starts with one nineteen is what it is. So you can, and then you go down, and then you see the merit paid on the next couple. So that, everything in red is what we're talking about in this, in this, uh, motion.
Yeah, so, so at that meeting, it was proposed rates, and then it was saying the longest pool to cover.
Yeah.
What was that, what's that on the budget, or the?
What, what do you found?
Like, one eighteen is, is up under, I guess it's under the same two, right? Yeah, because I guess.
Yeah, so it's all under the same, the same item number, so it's, it's, uh.
It's okay to.
Yeah.
Not right. Well, three is like the page one eighteen, right?
Three is the green. What we're talking about now, the supplement, is the red.
The page one nineteen. Yeah, okay, okay, that makes more sense.
Yeah, so two, J, is in regards to employee wage adjustment supplement. Which includes what is in your packet, pause, and starts on page one thirty-two. It goes through.
One thousand.
So literally.
At the last meeting, we took all the supplements that were salaries, and we put them into basically one deck.
Why don't we do it in J before three? Because we're two.
Three, three just has to do with, with the ranges, it, it's incident, it's, it's not, doesn't have, have anything to do with pay per.
Okay, okay, I, I get that now, thanks.
Yeah.
Well.
Does it make sense, you guys want me to, it looks like there's a lot, a lot of losses. So the, the way, yeah, Andy and, and Bill was not here. So what we did at the meeting, uh, and it's, it's linked, uh, on page one eighteen, is our assessment and review of, of current wages, uh, versus what we were proposing, yeah, the salary range scale. And so the idea was to try to see where we needed those adjustments to ensure that our employees fit into that scale. And so there were three recommendations to come from that meeting, uh, for this process to work. One would be the, the budget supplement as opposed in, uh, protected years or receptive. And then the second recommendation to move us forward is, is to adopt the employee salary range scale schedule. And then the third action item was to create this, bring your benefits, maybe as part of the study, uh, future wage increases, whether there are, there are steps, and take a look at your performance evaluations of the job description, look at the, the organization made up, and a ton of others. At that meeting, the village board, uh, moved to create a wage and benefit, uh, committee. Uh, and then verbally supported, uh, both the supplementals that were submitted at that time in the twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-one schedule. And so what we're doing here now is we're bringing the, uh, the supplemental salary schedule for people, so that we can get that into our budget.
Yeah, and I just wanna, just so we're straight up, is we read through the supplements that were requested. Some of them had longevity, some had moving rates up. We took all of that, and that's what the committee's gonna give, and we just took the wages. So, so we didn't have to go through all of these and work through, try to simplify it.
Cool, understood.
All right. By a motion and a second, any other discussion? All right, let's do, uh, let's do a roll call.
Trustee Brunner?
Yes.
Trustee Paul McCoskey?
Yes.
Trustee Hartman?
Yes.
Trustee Brochus?
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius?
Yes.
President Langford?
Yes.
All right, so number three, what is?
Can we do the library?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, all right, Michael. Is that in here?
It is, what I.
That's what page it's on.
Yeah.
It's on page one forty-eight.
One forty-eight?
Yes, of the packet. Was appended into the library supplemental request, the, was a concern that was brought up by the library board, uh, library director. When the library filed its supplemental requests, um, they are actually, between the two, they asked for twenty-three hundred dollars. They're looking for that to be amended up to sixty-five hundred dollars or a forty-two hundred dollar increase for the salaries of both the assistant librarian and the children's librarian. Uh, the library, always erring on the side of financial fiscal constraint, went low in these requests. And, uh, these were their initial ideas, but erred on the side of, um, not asking for, uh, allotments that they clearly feel are justified for their employees, but that were not initially requested. Also in, uh, comparison with other departments, they feel it's very much so in line with other pay grades and rankings of other employees at the same grade level.
Can I ask a question? Sure. Is this sort of retroactive once they saw the request from other departments?
Yeah, that's absolutely what it was. It was pretty much, they were, this is what they want to do, then.
We were being basically more conservative than other departments, they're trying to be more aligned.
Exactly. That is absolutely what's being said here. So that being said, if there are any questions, I make a motion to approve this amended supplemental request from the library.
I would second that. I have a motion, a second discussion. I, I, I have, I'm gonna state some concern. I think the instructions were very clear. I think if we allow this, we'll never get Congress. Someone else is gonna do a self-check, and we'll pay get this, and we should get this. I would like for this to be filed for the committee to look. That's one of the things we're gonna look at, is are people in the right grade? What are their job descriptions? And if you look at that range, there's a forty percent between the low and the high in each of the ranges. And just because so-and-so is at this, doesn't mean everybody has at that grade. I mean, that's why there's this forty percent, you know, difference. So my, my whole thing is, again, um, it seems like the justification is they feel that they're culpable to someone else. I, I don't know if that's true or not. I think the committee, if this is something we have to look at, to put people in the right grade and the right range, and then we go for it. I, so I, I, I'm not in support, we raise those, those, uh, individuals in salaries. Uh, maybe not as much as, uh, the library board feels, but, I mean, I think it's, it's now's not the time to do that. And again, you gotta have some type of data to start making these decisions. And they fall within the range of their grade, so, uh, I just think we need to wait a year, just work it out that way. Andy?
It's been a rough two years for people who are in this, aren't aware, librarians, educators, uh, public figures, elected officials. I think we need to value, uh, those who educate our children in this community. You know, maybe they underestimate their own values, they definitely saw it at some point, and are asking us to, to then legitimize it. So I would actually say, let's, let's support them, make them feel valued, because they do a great service here in the community. Whether it's the Xander Bookwalk, or all of the programs they offer here. Whether it's the Xander Bookwalk or all of the programs they offer here. I I really think that we want to have a high quality librarian staff, and this is the, you know, a drop in the bucket, let's please support this.
All right, uh I I'm just gonna say, Andy, it's not a drop in the bucket. The same problems that the educators, the library staff, the rest of our residents have the same thing. They're going through struggles, they're having difficult time. We have to keep that in mind. It's not just our staff, everyone's through difficult times and are having it. And I think we have to respect the process also on this. It's not matter, we've given their, we've given each of these individuals a raise. We've given raises to their part-time staff. It's not like we're not, it's the question is. The process and what are we basing on? So then the next person comes in, Jerry, with this app, well, the librarian has this. We think our facility people do better, so we should get another twenty five hundred. But then you come back, where do you put the end to it? And I think one of the answers to that is with this committee to really look at this and make adjustments, but right now. I don't think we just spend this money because we think it's a small amount. Or I don't devalue someone because I say we can't afford to do it. I think we've given raises. I think we've made a huge effort this year to prioritize our employees and give them big jumps. And now I think we have to look at the taxpayers a little bit that we are. They're the ones that brought us us in, and we're supposed to be representing now. So I think we need to take some time here, and it's not a bad thing to say no or will look into it for the future. That is not a negative thing for policymakers. Andy?
Yeah, I would definitely agree with that. Uh you know, and I think the taxpayers would would also want to have good services provided to them. And I I would argue that, I'm not here to say that librarians are more valuable than public municipal workers or. Anybody on the police force or anybody in the administration, what I'm saying is that we need to compensate accordingly. If they discovered that their frugality and or trying to save the village money out of just like sheer. You know, uh will of themselves was not on line with every other department. Now is the time for us to say, look, you 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 shortened yourself, you figured out that everybody's asking for a little bit more. Now we can supplement it and make what you originally had put into your budget, right? So I would again say, let's just support the.
What else? All right, four calls, please.
Trustee Brochus.
No.
Trust enthusiast.
No.
Trustee Brunner.
No.
Trustee Paul Mikowski.
Yes.
Trustee Hartman.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
No. All right.
Wage supplemental, uh the next one will be item number.
Three, okay, discussion and possible action to approve uh twenty twenty two employee salary schedule. That was the need, that's the ranges for each rate. And there's a forty percent difference from the low to the high each of the grade. That's kind of how we set out. I don't know how how much detail we wanna go into. Well, yes, we can. That was from a study that was done in twenty fifteen in the village. Bill put it into a formula with the increases from the time that study was completed to current. Came up with four point three percent, he applied that to the original chart and that's where it all started from. Any questions, Phil, Ryan? Otherwise, I don't want to.
I'll make a motion, we approve the twenty twenty two point seven.
I'll second that. I have a motion and second, any discussion?
My question is, we're approving both the numbers for the employees in red and the whole table or?
No, no, we already did the red.
Oh, we already did it.
Yeah, just the schedule.
This, yeah, we already did the red. But we're just doing the green.
So it's the it's the grade and then there's the minimum and the maximum for that grade.
And that came out with a study we did in twenty, was it twenty fifteen or twenty fourteen?
Uh it's twenty fourteen, it's.
Okay. So he just, he just applied increases over that.
So are we placing the employees inside these respective grades as well?
No, 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 just, so we kept everybody at the same grade. All we all we're quoting on is the adjustment of the grades.
From twenty fourteen to today.
Yes.
Okay, okay, I I guess my question is, and I'm not trying to, I'm just wondering what the benefit is, isn't the committee gonna do this stuff?
No, 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 well, they could, but I mean, Bill did it, the committee would be looking at. So the committee should be looking at grade one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. And what what are the bullet points to get into that grade?
Right.
Then you look at the job descriptions and you figure out from the job descriptions what grade they fit into.
Right.
Once you're there, then you have this range, because an employee may want to just stay at their current job. And what we'll be looking at are possible step raises within that schedule. And that way people can move up in that grade.
By them instead. Up to the next level.
Or, yeah, no, well, no, you shouldn't move up to a grade unless you meet those requirements.
Right.
You don't get a raise, the raise is not moving you up. The job description, your new job puts you to the grade. That's why there's a forty percent difference spread.
So, yeah, that's fine with me, I mean.
Okay.
I was just wondering.
Yeah, I can go into more details if you'd like it, but I think, I think you captured it correctly.
All right, so I I can't remember, do we have a motion?
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? Let's do a roll call of this.
Trustee Hartman.
Yes.
Trustee Paul Mikowski.
Yes.
Trustee Brunner.
Yes.
Trust enthusiast.
Yes.
Trustee Brochus.
Yeah.
President Langfeld.
Yes. All right, number four. Discussion and possible action to discuss. This one is confusing, I'm sorry. Uh discussion and possible action to discuss and possible action on resolution. Twenty twenty one dash thirteen designated official authorization with where. Official intent with respect to general capital improvement project under reimbursement bond regulation.
Yeah, so that's my fault, there's already stated uh to us there are possible actions. But basically what this does is it provides uh myself uh authority to declare the. Uh for the cost of this year's annual repayment program to be borrowed next year with that borrow. Uh reason being is because we've gone through this year and we spent down our fund balance and our capital improvement fund plus other funds. Uh to try not to borrow for this year, and we were, we were, we're uh trying to make the decision of whether or not we. We move forward with the annuals we're taking depending on cost, depending on availability of contractors and availability of staff. Uh we got the kind of some some good winter sales here to be able to continue and do the annual payment this year. Thus, we would like to finance it uh somehow, I will pause it here instead of borrowing two separate times. Is this fact, fun, general fund fund balance to pay for this year and then as part of next year borrowing reimbursed us. So done this in the past, I believe with other previous administrators, uh the code allows it. We confirmed that with our attorney and with our mock counsel. Of course, where they're going.
This has to do with motion, I want the discussion first, uh so let's open it up. Do people have questions on at least uh the process which is being proposed?
Yeah. So I don't, I don't understand, when you're talking a hundred thousand dollars of possible loan, that. That they'll be able to.
Okay, well, what I'm, what we're signing, what what we're doing is. Instead of going out and borrowing a hundred thousand this year.
Use the fund balance.
We're gonna use fund balance with the condition, because when we go and do the bond, you have to know. That if you've already done the work, so why are you getting a bond? That the bond is gonna be tied to replace the money that we did. You gotta let them know ahead of time. You know, that we're borrowing for something that's already spent and done. That stays statute. So what this is doing is avoiding us from going out and borrowing long this year to do it. We're moving it to next year with the understanding that it's just part of the law. From our own, from from within. Yeah, all right.
So so you're authorizing me to declare the intent. So after we sign the money, uh there has to be a formal process whereby someone needs to declare the fund that we spent this year and be borrowed for next. Uh the hundred thousand dollars that we're talking about here for any, the bill board has already approved that capital budget. Uh so it's it's not that we're spending any additional dollars, actually, we've come under that amount. Uh but it's authorization as for for me or whoever you may want to declare that intent within the system.
Okay. So, go ahead, Michael.
I have a totally different side question. Could the village board just borrow money to fund the general funds fund balance? Or does it always have to be tied to a capital project to borrow?
Yeah, yeah, a general policy, we don't wanna borrow for operating costs.
Just the question.
It'd be like borrowing from these, we making people pay taxes and then we just stick it in a bank. That's that's actually not a, uh this financially not a smart move, but ethically, there's a problem in taking some money and just throwing it in the savings account. It's supposed to be when you take your money, it's supposed to go to something.
Yeah, and that's, and that's, and that's why it's so important to have a fund balance policy. Like we can do things like if we didn't have a fund balance policy, or if we're above a fund balance policy, technically sent down. Uh and our fund balance is dead to reduce.
Right, absolutely. It was just a question, because then, but we have a, but with that. We have a contingency line inside our budget, it's an operating cost, and that can just go into fund balance?
Yeah, it's generally what happens is at the end of the year, anything not spent, which is sometimes happens. It goes into fund balance. If you're a little underbought, then pull from fund balance. Yes, that's your emergency fund, and they allow you to have a certain percent. We've said it was twenty percent, that's what our policy said. So that's what we have to say. Now, my question, Bill, can the wording be up to a hundred thousand? Because I know.
Yeah.
I know the the bids that came in are under a hundred dollars. And it's possible there'll be some salary savings that I think we could apply. So I I guess what I'm wondering is, I don't wanna borrow, I don't wanna borrow the amount that's absolutely necessary. So if I, that didn't seem that way, it seemed like we had to fill in the blank a hundred dollars there.
Yeah, so it it is a blank and I put a hundred thousand dollars there, so the motion could be up to a hundred thousand, and when I make the declaration of intent, we'll fill that number in.
That's how I would prefer it to be. But it's not likely to be over a hundred thousand.
That's what, that's what, but if we go over that, I'll be compared.
Yeah, I think it would be. Far, because I think the bid was seventy two thousand. I would make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, a motion and second, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All falls, same, so move. All right, number five, discussion and possible action regarding the removal of no parking. On the twenty four, twenty five hundred blocks available. But I just wanna make it clear that the recommendations from the public safety committee is only to remove the parking restriction for the twenty four hundred block. Not the twenty five hundred. The request was made by the residents and taxpayers of the twenty four hundred block. Um as we looked at the reason for remote parking, there really wasn't historical data why that is. Um however, the apartments have ample parking and there's mailbox stations all along there, it's coming into a corner. The request was made of the people on the twenty four hundred block. As we talked through it, the public safety committee, it makes perfect sense to remove it only for the twenty four hundred block. It wasn't a request for the twenty five hundred block, and I've been personally seen cars around the corner, around uh. Mail drop off times, positive issues, so I would just, our recommendation of only the twenty four hundred block, it was unanimous of the public safety. I just wanna make sure that's clear in the motion. All right, so Calvin?
Uh thanks, that that's quite helpful. Um when you say twenty four hundred block, I see that there's a twenty four twenty six, it's sort of past Woodside. Um when I drove it today, I was looking, I was looking at the whole thing. Now I wish I could capture the down of twenty four hundred block, but um is it from right with the cursors or is it from Woodside down?
There's one, there's one pass, there's a.
Okay, right there.
There's a twenty five oh one. It's it's probably half a block past the Woodside Drive where it comes down.
Okay, wait for it to see the cursors.
Yep, yep, right over there, yep.
Okay, thanks.
And the chief, you're okay with that?
Yeah, it was discussed. I I have no opinions either way.
We're twenty four or twenty five?
No, twenty four. I don't know how the twenty five hundred, that was originally, it was both, so I think that that's how that mistake happened, but. Um public safety only approved the twenty four hundred block. There is, there is a cost to it, uh I did talk to the period, it's gonna cost at least five hundred dollars to paint over that.
Calvin? Well, I my my concern when I drove it today was uh was, I guess it's still valid, but maybe less less valid. Um a lot of people walking is a main thoroughfare, one of the main thoroughfares for for people walking along the road, but of course, you only have those sidewalks through there. I'm sure P S E discussed it, I guess maybe I'll ask for some more information about what came out of it. Uh the public safety committee um with regard to walking, you know, two cars each side, walking, make thoroughfare, you know, cars going in and out.
Oh, yeah, we. We discussed um all of those scenarios, both at the twenty four hundred block and the twenty five hundred block. The twenty four hundred block has residents, um number one, who make requests. Number two, there's also a number of driveways there, so there's gonna be a couple of places where there isn't room for a car. I would say probably four, six, seven, eight, thousands. And what they want to do is take advantage of it. Uh one of the residents' point was, it's more dangerous for me to walk across the street at the apartment last night, it would cause. There was no real precedent, there were white uh in that streetway, but it is no parking. We did not see additional issues. To me, that one block is.
And confirming that there is parking south of Lewis Street, not that side of that.
So I don't believe there's yellow there, and the the same, you know, yellow would stay around the corners and by those right by the firelight and some of that stuff. There's also a couple of smaller, like three or four sections of curb that could just stay yellow, I mean, nobody's gonna park there anyway.
Andy? Yeah, I mean, I live around the corner in Valley Street, and that particular section is quite a bitch, despite people walking with their dogs, walking with each other. I, yeah, I I I'm nervous about having more street parking. It's just gonna kind of interrupt that natural flow that the sidewalk. And the ability of people to enjoy whatever limited access they have to to walk that Valley Street and those kinds of stuff. So I I I don't know how I'd feel right now about this one. I'd I'd probably vote against it.
All right, can I have a motion, please? I will make a motion to remove the restricted parking on the yellow curb from just the twenty four hundred block available. All right, can I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and second, any other discussion?
Just to clarify, so that that would stop at twenty four, twenty six or twenty five oh one, that general vicinity?
Twenty five oh one.
Where's twenty five oh?
On the other side of the.
But but we're just talking about removing that one side, this is on both sides. Right, correct.
We get our on one side, right?
So basically, it's gonna be yellow, basically in front of the yards, in front of the apartment building, so.
Right, it will stay yellow all along the apartment buildings in front of twenty four, twenty six. In front of twenty four, twenty, twenty four eighteen, those five units there is where the yellow is always.
Right, right, yeah.
All right, this is your roll call, please.
Trust enthusiast.
Oh, I'm sorry, is there someone wanna say something?
Well, I mean, really where you need it on the side of the road is the twenty five hundred block. Because what you have is a couple of duplexes there in Valley Street, so twenty five hundred block. The twenty-five hundred block has apartment parking that's asked, but for. Right. Understandable, but when you have guests, you have other people coming. If you really need it, you're not going to need it in front of the duplexes per se, if you have parking on the other side of the street. Where you're going to need it is where there's actual people living in.
And the, the request came from residents and taxpayers in the twenty-four hundred block. Public Safety Committee, you know, that two different, it was badly imposed, and came up with some collaborative decision, you know, so that the twenty-four hundred block is the recommendation from Public Safety Committee to remove the yellow.
And, and someone who walks that every day, it's rare that you even see cars park on the side that you can't park, right? Yeah, it's pretty open. Yeah, except for when you get down Lewis Street and want to ride in the car, there's just not a lot of parking.
Where, where I think you may see it is a, that's, that's when you will see, and you can see the chaos around that whole area, there's some. I think the residents and taxpayers that made this request were all what I considered a public safety issue, I think it's a very reasonable request, I mean, a reasonable.
Maybe you just have, my confusion, I guess, is why the twenty-five hundred block is here in this conversation.
It's not, it was in here, it was in here in, in the agenda.
Oh, the twenty-five hundred block.
And that's not the motion, the motion is just the twenty-four hundred.
Motion was just the twenty-four. Okay, okay. And this side, right, I'm sorry. So the yellow from the front of the left is going to stay.
The twenty-one hundred block.
Is this a?
Okay.
All right, well.
No, no, no.
All right, go ahead.
All right, roll call.
Trustee Thuzius.
No.
Trustee Brunner.
Yes.
Trustee Paul Mikowski.
Yes.
Trustee Hartman.
No.
Trustee Brochus.
No.
President Langfeld.
Yes. It fails since the tie hole, right? No, it was a tie hole, right?
Tie, yes.
Okay. Fails, all right.
Chief? Yeah, just one question. I, I, under, before we move on to the future agenda, under two J, did we address the least administrative assistance supplement budget? Did it rest, it was actually after the library supplemental? And then it moved down, right?
Yeah. It's part of the, of all that.
It was back to the library, and you're supposed to do that separately, that's why I'm asking.
No, that's good, I, I think it was, Bill, yeah. Okay, I, I think when I said that, it's, yeah, okay, thank you. We should just not put it. All right, future agenda. Anything? All right, we're going to go to a closed session. Jerry, can I just have a minute, I'll close the door. Yeah, I'll make a motion, we're going to close, do you have a second?
Say it.
Roll call, all.
Trustee Brochus.
Yes.
Trustee Paul Mikowski.
Yes.
Trustee Thuzius.
Yeah.
Trustee Brunner.
Yes.
Trustee Hartman.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes. Thank you, Chief. All right. Yeah, I'll give you a call as soon as I get done talking. It's up to you, I, I.
This is.
Yeah.
Do you want to skip around?
All right. I'll get it. We're in closed session. Jerry's going to, the topic Jerry's going to stay in with us. I'll go, say. We'll wait for him to get the recorder back on, and then we'll. All right. I have a motion to adjourn, so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, all right. Remember, we're going to do the special order meeting for the second Monday in October.